Okay, we're gonna get started, folks. If I could ask everyone to be quiet as we start the meeting. We have a quorum. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, April 19th, 2024. Public comment is gonna be both taken in person and in the council chambers via teleconference. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Bloomingfield, Delion, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Huck, Herkorian, Lee, McCosker, Padilla, Park, Price, Rahm, and Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Jawaslawski, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Other members, Mr. Price.
President, I'm recusing myself from items three, thirty-five, and thirty-six because my wife's employer has worked with the applicant on these items. Three, thirty-five, thirty-six.
Three, thirty-five, and thirty-six, so we will hold those and
Thank you.
Have you recused when we get to those items?
I want to welcome a friend of ours, a constituent, the California Boys and Girls Club Junior Youth of the Year for 2024, Mr. Andrew Anderson.
And with that, let's have the grand unveiling. I know. Thank you, Tim. Thank you very much, guys, and we appreciate you and your participation and your influence that we know will be a resounding voice throughout the neighborhoods in Los Angeles.
Maria P., Richard Liu, Lucy HSV., Alejandro G., Janice Yee., Sonia Rodriguez, Jay Z., Margarita R., Rosa Mandrano, Reiki G., Lin Ta. If you've heard your name called, please go ahead and line up. There are additional names. Those are the ones we've called. No yelling out. So just identify who just yelled out. I've warned you. And if you can identify the person, please remove them. We will not have yelling out.
[speaking Spanish]
Good morning, everyone. My name is Richard, and I have already lived in Hillside Villa for 35 years. I am aware that the city is in the process of finishing a deal with our landlord that would give him $15 million, but I want to ask why us as tenants still have to return all this back rent? If I need to return all of the rent I owe for the past four years and only have six years to do it, as a senior on fixed income, there's just no way. There's no way at all. So I demand today that City Council must amend this deal so that all back rent is forgiven.
Thank you.
[speaking Spanish]
Can we get the translation?
[speaking Spanish]
I hope that -- that's the wrong language, first of all, but I hope that this City Council has the integrity to move forward a deal that is actually just and humane and treats us with equity.
Thank you. And can you give us some -- sorry. Okay, next speaker. By the way, well. Hi. Which item did you want to speak on?
Okay. Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Sonia Rodriguez. Mi comentario general que no es justo que las viviendas estén muy altas.
Good morning. My name is Sonia Rodriguez, and I want to give a public commentary. It's not fair that they are very high, the rent. So if we're talking about youth, it is not fair that in the future our youth will have to pay higher rents than we are paying now. So I have daughters and sons, and I have grandchildren, and the way the rent is going up in the future, it looks like they're gonna have to live in the street. So the landlord in the building that we are living, he was offered $15 million cash.
[speaking Spanish]
And he has a debt that is five millions that he didn't pay.
[speaking Spanish]
And we are asking for help so we can pay a rent that is delayed, a debt that we have.
[speaking Spanish]
So not only the debt we have to pay, but also a 3% extra.
[speaking Spanish]
And the landlord, he got 10 years to pay these $5 million that he owes. And I think that this is not fair. I'm sorry if I'm offending someone, but this is the way I think. I am a grandmother, and I'm thinking in the future of my grandchildren.
[speaking Spanish]
I wish you a happy day.
Thank you very much. Okay, next speaker.
My name is Lauren Peritra, and I'm speaking on 37 and open public comment.
Okay, so you have a minute. Actually, no, we voted on 37, so you have. You're correct, sorry. You have a minute for 37 and then a minute for general.
Great. Good morning, council members. I'm here to speak in support of the reauthorization of a state of emergency and homelessness so that way we can continue to activate the city's emergency operations center. My name is Lauren Peritra. I'm a proud resident of Los Angeles, where I've worked for the past 13 years. After our firsthand experience with the total loss of my home in November 2023, I was taken aback by the uncharitable sentiment of my fellow constituents at a recent Brentwood HOI meeting. And frankly, I continue to find the general public's attitude towards unhoused upsetting elitist and cold. Kim, there are people that are dying, and I don't believe that these people, over 50,000 of them living unhoused, with another 80,000 at risk, just one medical bill or accident or mold infestation away deserve to suffer and die because they are poor and unable to access affordable housing. Disabled! Thank you. Disabled, undocumented, escaping domestic violence, queer, transgender, suffering from the disease of addiction, are experimenting with drugs for survival. Housing is a human right, and people deserve to live dignified lives regardless of their social status. In a major undercount due to jurisdiction, at least 2,000 Angelinos died living unhoused last year alone. That is at least five deaths per day, and there has been a 300% surge in deaths amidst the fentanyl and affordable housing crisis. Every single one of these deaths is a policy failure. And these people and their sufferings are not an inconvenience to my quality of life. I'm not mad at them. I'm mad at the systems and policies that have made it prohibitively difficult for them to get back up on their feet after being knocked down time and time again. These are our neighbors, and treating them as disposable in one of the richest cities in the world is unfucking acceptable. The housing crisis in L.A. is a complex humanitarian crisis deserving of aggressive expedited action and compassion from our communities and policymakers. Also, Kevin Delion has got to go. I yield my time. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker.
Okay, I live in Hillside Villa. I lived there for 26 years, and I know later on you guys are gonna vote for -- to approve a deal that was made between the Housing Department and the landlord, Tom Botts. And that deal is not ideal for us. That deal gives this landlord $15 million and extend a debt of $5 million 10 more years. And us, we are requested to pay a back rent, which is in total for our -- in total, about $1.5 million. So, and with a 3% interest. So I just want to know if you're gonna vote the way this deal is against us and in favor of the landlord. If you're gonna vote the way it is, are you gonna walk out of here proud of it? Proud of helping Hillside Villa? I don't think so. You can do much better for us. Thank you.
My name is Lin Ta, and I'm speaking under general public comment.
Very good. Please begin.
Hi, my name is Lin Ta. I'm an organizer with the Chinatown Community for Equitable Development with the Hillside Villa Tenants Association. Hillside Villa is one of the biggest and most historic tenant fights in this city. And I want to remind folks that the landlord, Tom Botts, initiated a 300% rent increase during a global pandemic, and when the tenants couldn't pay it, he decided to evict them. The city's response to this historic tenant struggle is this agreement that is the subject of item 33 today. This agreement was negotiated without any tenant input. It was negotiated between Tom Botts and Ann Sewell, the head of LAHD, who has historically been hostile towards tenants in this city. This is a lopsided agreement that gives millions of dollars to the landlord and does not provide enough eviction protections for the tenants. Landlords might have more money, but tenants have the power of the people, and we are watching to make sure that you will be protecting the rights of tenants in this city.
Thank you. Next speaker. Hi. Would you please tell us your name and what you want to speak on?
Yes, thank you. I'm on the list as Jay Z. That's not being cute. Those are my initials, so.
Okay, please go ahead.
Great, thank you. So I want to remind everyone here that LAHD was established, in its own words, to address the growing shortage of housing -- affordable housing in this city, and yet the deal you have before you in item 33 was explicitly designed to allow evictions. In many cases, it guarantees them. This is an astonishing level of incompetence from this department. The best thing I can say about this deal is that it gives us, organizers and tenants, some breathing room to continue doing what LAHD has so far refused to do, interrupting the eviction to homelessness pipeline. If we had waited for LAHD, or in fact, City Council, to do something about these expiring covenants, many of the people speaking to you today would already be on the street. Without continued organizing and advocacy, they are still at risk because of how this deal is structured. Whatever the outcome today, this whole process has been a disgrace. Piling policy failure on top of policy failure is not going to address the housing crisis. It's clear that something dramatic needs to be done about the cost of rent in this city. This was a chance, and you blew it. You absolutely got played by a hapless bureaucrat and a conniving, manipulative, abusive landlord, bargaining in bad faith. Do better.
Thank you.
My name is Rosa H., and I'm doing public comment.
Very good. Please begin.
I'm also a tenant of the Hillside Villa Tenants Association, and I'm here to present myself as a group. We're really, really dissatisfied with this deal. And with that being said, it's clear that we're still at risk of being evicted for rent owed, and it's also allowing the landlord to increase rent yearly parking fees, pet fees, and do whatever he can to do to evict us. He's shown what a piece of shit he is. He is not as a human being. So we demand that the rent owed be forgiven and all eviction cases be dropped to keep us housed and stay safe. Stop protecting his landlords.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Maria Guerrero. I'm a member of the Hillside Villa Tenants Association. I want to inform you that all of us have been impacted by the pandemic in that some of us lost our jobs, some of us lost our family members, and -- I was one of them who did lose a family member due to COVID. And we do not want to experience more trauma by the threat of losing our homes. We kindly ask that the city of Los Angeles invest in ensuring that Hillside Villa tenants get a fresh start and also provide additional assistance to remedy any overpayments that may have been made when the illegal rent increase were applied to the tenants during the period of that, when the rent was supposed to be frozen. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Janice Yu, and I'm speaking on general public comment.
Okay, please begin.
L.A. claims to want to be a national innovator in housing policy, but the only thing you're innovating with this deal, as it's currently written, is handing a shitty landlord a $15 million check to put working-class tenants back in the same exact conditions that made them vulnerable to evictions in the first place. My Uncle Benson Li is a Vietnamese refugee who literally swam across an ocean to escape American bombs during the Vietnam War. After 35 years of living at Hillside Villa and in the Chinatown community, Benson faces death again, this time at the hands of a Malibu landlord and a city government that enables these landlords over and over again. You might think I'm exaggerating when I say this. Deal in its current form is a death sentence. To you, maybe $500 is just the cost of a designer purse or a flight to Hawaii, but to a tenant on a fixed income like $900 a month like Benson, being asked to pay $500 of back rent with interest on top of his $850 monthly rent is a death sentence, leaving him vulnerable to eviction. The bare minimum the city can do is amend this deal. Housing is a human right!
I'm here because I want to make sure that the emergency order is extended. I live right next door to a homeless encampment, and to see what people go through, to see the depths of despair that they live in, we cannot have this around us. As everyone's been saying, housing is a human right. We all deserve to have a house, a place to call our home, and honestly, I think that it's awful and disgusting what you people are doing with item 33. You need to amend that. And Kevin Delion, you need to go. You are a piece of shit.
And if I can remind everybody, sometimes it's hard to hear the speakers, so if you keep it down, that would be very useful, because I want everybody who comes to the podium to be able Where are the names? Clearly speak. Okay, I'm gonna call some additional names. Where are they? Okay, we have Jacob Wucher, Fede R., Alfredo Espinoza, Ray Wee, Suna Kim, Marina Malouf, Annie Shaw, Ed Concepcion, Rene Alexander, Fernandez Sanchez, Phyllis Chu, Junie Wong, Andy C. Call the number if you've heard your name, please come on up.
Public comment.
Okay, please go ahead.
I'm just gonna repeat what I already said in the Housing Committee. The whole point of this deal is to stop evictions, but this deal does not stop evictions. Giving Tom Botts $15 million without even requiring him to rescind the 35 evictions that are currently pending in court right now is criminal. Is criminal. I'm sorry, but you guys are celebrating a $10,000 micro grant from the Chargers as progress, and then you have the largest rent strike in decades in the city trying to push forward bold housing policy, and you treat them like trash. It's embarrassing. This deal needs to be made better so 35 families don't end up on the street.
Thank you. Next speaker. Thank you.
I really wasn't expecting to be up here today, but I just, when you look at that deal, it's filled with a lot of inequalities and a lack of transparency. I am a tenant at Hillside Villa. I wasn't called, whether I had any opinions about the deal, and neither were the other tenants here. So when you look at that deal, it needs to be amended. We have back rents that add up close to $1.5 million. I can't afford that. How do you give a landlord a certain amount of money to start a building to house people for fair rent that are low income and then on the last year raise their rents $1,000 to $2,000, not for the year, but per month? I don't know. So I hope you vote the right way and protect us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Hi, if you'd please remind us of the name you signed up under.
Any general comment.
Right, please begin.
We all know that the city has the money. It is just misused. Instead of working together to defund the police, to reduce violence and lawsuits, powerful people pit communities against each other for crumbs every day. Tom Botts is indebted to the city of L.A. He has accumulated his mentioned sports cars, global trips, with blood, sweat, and tears of the working-class community. This way, the deal is, it's a union-busting contract that forces individual tenants to make deals with Botts. There are 35 eviction cases in court, and there's no requirement for him to drop the cases. What happens if Botts gets the money, and he reneges and still evicts people? What is going -- who is going to enforce this contract? You, LAHD? The city of L.A. has had three decades to prevent this from happening. Hillside Villa has fought for the city of L.A. to make history with eminent domain, and instead, the city is making history repeat itself.
Thank you.
Shame on you!
Thank you.
Botts got filled out, we got sold out!
Thank you. Next speaker. Hi, if you'd please remind us of your name that you signed up under.
My name is Suna, general public comment.
Please go ahead.
Tom Botts is a textbook representative of the landlord class. While his tenants struggle to make ends meet amidst a pandemic, he funds useless luxuries for himself with their hard-earned money. His private ownership of a plot of land in Chinatown gives him the power to take away at any moment another human being's fundamental right to housing. The city seems to have no problem with this. In fact, this deal is a textbook demonstration of the city's relationship with landlords. The city would rather act like poor people don't exist, because the deal as it stands will give Botts, already a millionaire, $15 million without any measures preventing him from evicting tenants. Tenants, meanwhile, will have to pay back all their rent debt with 3% interest. It's basically a rent increase. No one can afford this. Tenants will be evicted, we're falling behind. Further, the deal's terms for Botts are crystal clear. The terms for the tenants, however, are left deliberately murky. They are an afterthought. The deal must be amended to drop all evictions at Hillside Villa and completely cancel the tenants' rent debt. There's a reason so many people distrust politicians. It's because of moments like this, where people realize that the city is only interested in propping up the rulers and deciding the fate of the people without their consent.
Thank you.
This is why we fight, and whatever happens, the struggle does not end.
We have to give everybody the same amount of time. Thank you very much. Next speaker.
My name is Rene Alexander. I'm with Hillside Villa. General comment, please.
Okay.
My name is Rene Alexander. I'm a tenant at Hillside Villa. I've lived here for 21 years. Oh. I've lived here for 21 years. I'd first like to thanks Councilmember Hernandez and her staff for the efforts of trying to get us a fair proposal with less than a week to do so, despite the fact that Snake and Sewell were behind your back and sided with the millionaire landlord's slum. This proposal is a prejudice bias in retaliation against the tenants by Anseul. In 2020, I was the president of Hillside Villa and sat for weeks negotiating with Tom Botts. This proposal is the exact same one that Snake and Sewell put before you, except it was a fair deal back then. This one is not. And the snake made some changes that only benefits Botts, and these are the changes. She gave Botts zero interest on a six-year default loan for $5 million with a 10-year extension. The snake gave us six years to pay 1.5% with a 3% interest to pay immediately, and that's an additional $45,000 for Botts.
Thank you.
Hi, yes, my name is Fernanda Sanchez, and I signed up for general public comment and item 33.
Please go ahead. Do you have a minute?
I just want to remind the council here that the Hillside Villa tenants won the unthinkable in 2022, which was that of getting eminent domain, and this very same city council let that die. That is shameful. Now we have a deal before us that is predatory and violent and will absolutely lead to homelessness. Do the right thing, amend the deal. Save Hillside Villa. 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 Save Hillside Villa.
We cannot have participation. This is a solo, only one person you get to speak when it's your time. Next speaker.
All right, I'm here to support the tenants of Hillside Villa. Two years ago, the City Council voted for the Housing Department to find funds to purchase the building in order to keep it affordable and allow tenants to stay in their homes. Well, what's happened since then? Nothing. And now you are voting on a secret deal between the Housing Department and the recalcitrant landlord, who will still owe $5 million to the city. Across Chinatown in L.A., tenants are facing the consequences of expiring 30-year affordability covenants entered into by greedy landlords. We can see that 30 years is not enough to protect the tenants from landlords who just have their eyes on the prize, which is in 30 years, they get to raise the rents to market rate. Why are you helping -- why are you being so generous and helping this landlord by paying him for a 10-year deal? We know that 30 years is not enough. Why have a 10-year deal? I demand that this deal be amended so that it actually protects
Okay, can you go on to item 37? That was general public comment.
Yes, okay. It protects affordable housing, and at a minimum, it should be amended to cancel the tenants' debt so that you're going to cancel, just like you're going to cancel the landlord's debt.
So, Speaker, sorry, Speaker, can you move on to item 37, which is for the homelessness emergency?
Yes, okay. So you need to keep tenants housed to prevent further homelessness. It requires that the current evictions be dropped. If the evictions are not dropped, then you will have more homelessness. Tenants need affordability.
So, Speaker, I'm sorry, I can't let everybody have two minutes. You're on Hillside Villa, so please move on to the actual extension of the homeless emergency declaration if you want to. If not, we'll take the next speaker.
Can you turn it back on? Tenants need affordability in perpetuity.
Okay, so Speaker, I'm sorry, we're gonna move on to the next speaker at this point. I'm sorry. Sorry. Okay, well, we'll have no yelling out. If you yell out, you will be removed. Next speaker. Yelling out, you'll be removed. Go ahead, Speaker. Speaker, I can't hear what the Speaker at the podium is saying. Speaker, would you please give us the name you signed up under?
It's Junie Wong.
Okay, thank Ms. Walsh. Which items did you sign up for?
A general comment.
Please go ahead. You have a minute.
Okay, two years ago, the Hillside Villa tenants won a historic vote to buy their building from their abusive landlord via eminent domain. This very city council voted for eminent domain and it did nothing to follow through on their word. Instead of exploring creative solutions in this housing crisis, tenants have a deal forced on them that they were never consulted on. This deal sells out the tenants and gives landlord Tom Botts $20 million, including $5 million in loan forgiveness. This also does nothing to drop the 35 current eviction cases. City Council, this deal is a joke and a slap in the face to working-class tenants. You need to amend the deal to be anything close to protecting affordable housing. At minimum, it should be amended to cancel the tenants' rent debt. The tenants' back rent totaled about $2 million, and there's no reason that can't be forgiven when you're willing to forgive Tom Botts's $5 million debt on a loan he didn't pay 30 years ago. Drop the current evictions, and you have to prevent any thereafter. Cancel the rent debt, cancel the evictions, keep tenants housed. It is that simple, and we are not lying when we say that we are watching you.
Thank you. I'm gonna call some additional speakers that can line up. If you hear your name, Candido, Stacy Cigara-Bollinger, No Need, and Rob Quan.
I'm here to demand the city amend LAHD's deal to include rent debt forgiveness and have landlord Tom Botts drop all eviction cases at Hillside Villa. We've been fighting an illegal 300 rent raise for the past five years after the affordability covenant expired. Because the city ignored our pressure for permanent affordable housing through eminent domain, Botts now stands to gain $15 million while tenants will be forced into a bad contract and risk eviction if they don't pay their rent debt. We have tenants living on fixed SSI. Sharon Chung is an elderly disabled tenant who isn't here due to health issues. She said in the past two years since the last motion, things have only gotten worse. She can barely pay the affordable amount now. She won't be able to afford another 500 in monthly payments and monthly debt payments. The fastest-growing household population are the elderly, and the city negligence for our housing crisis is exactly why. The collective debt is nothing to Tom Botts but life-ruining to our tenants. Affordable housing covenants were built on borrowed time, and the time has run out. If the city wants to prevent even more evictions, they must amend the deal and drop all evictions and rent debt. Housing is a human right!
Thank you. Okay, next speaker. So, hang on, I want to listen to Ms. Cigara-Bollinger. Hi. So what items did you sign up for?
I'll be speaking on items 37, 39, 43, 45, 46, and general public comment, but if you could please set my timer for one minute, because I will be taking general public comment first.
We don't
Yeah, I'll be taking general public comment first.
All right, go ahead. Go ahead.
Nithya says she's a champion for reform, but she's reneged on but she's reneged on everything she's sworn, and she won't even pay attention when the public is speaking. She shows up late, she says nothing, she votes yes on more police funding. There was a time her and I got along, till I called out her lies and behavior is wrong. If you could see that Nithya Rahman is a grifter, she's not progressive, she's a shape-shifter. She doesn't care about you or me. Got a resignation from Ryan Ahary. I wonder why he left so suddenly. Nithya, what's the tea on Ahary?
Okay, so, please now move to the items if you wish.
Absolutely, so, um, let me talk about number 39. That's a star for Frankie Valley. I love me some Jersey Boys. But it doesn't make sense to put stars on a street where workers can't afford to live, where six people die every day, and where it doesn't matter whose name's on the star, there's going to be shit on it at some point, because there's no bathrooms for anyone to use. Item 43, we're going to light up City Hall for child abuse. Every time we do this, it costs $400. We're in a budget deficit, and you all keep passing $400 motions to turn on some fucking lights. How many hotel rooms could $400 get for a night to prevent some deaths on the street? We're talking about child abuse. There's a lot of homeless children out there. Number 45 is a traffic calming motion. We need to stop trying to solve the endless problem of traffic and start giving pedestrians and public transportation more resources. Those are the future, those are the safe options. 37 is emergency order regarding the unhoused resident population. If you look at the details of this emergency order, what it does is it expedites a lot of building contracts. It makes it really easy for developers to get subsidies, and we get a lot of overpriced, shoddily-built tissue boxes that we can't really afford, because affordability could go anywhere up to like 130% AMI, which is like $100,000 a year. Most city workers make less than $50,000 a year. So, it's interesting to have an emergency order that's supposed to address the unhoused resident population when you have all of these people here who are just fighting to stay in their homes, and you can't even listen to them. There's no rent freeze, there's no moratorium on evictions. A $100 increase in average rents is associated with a 9% increase in homelessness. So, item 46, we're going to be lighting up City Hall for Armenian genocide. Not a single one of you cares about genocide. You passed a bill that makes criticizing the state of Israel a hate crime. There's blood on all of your hands. You haven't said the word genocide. Unisses is the only one who's said anything about dead aid workers. You have blood on your hands. And I'm not going anywhere, I'm not going anywhere until you say there's a genocide happening. This is actually red frosting. It's not blood, but you have blood on your hands. There's blood in this building. There's blood on Nithya Rahman's name, because she supported this despite being a progressive. There's blood on all of your hands. There's blood on all of your hands.
Okay.
Shame on all of you. This is your fault.
Okay, so Ms. Cigara-Bollinger, your time has expired. Now, we're going to have to clean up a mess. Ms. Cigara-Bollinger.
Ms. Bollinger is disrupting the meeting. Sergeants, remove her. She's been... Anyone shouting out will be removed. Please remove everyone shouting out. Anyone shouting out? Next speaker. Ms. Cigara-Bollinger is being removed. Okay, we will have order in this chamber. Anyone speaking out is going to be removed. Next speaker. Mr. No Need to sign up. We'll have order in the chambers. Sergeants, feel free to remove anybody who is shouting out. No yelling out, please. Okay, while we clean up the mess, we're going to go to the phones for virtual calls for right now, so we can clean up the podium. If you could, if you could, please get the callers from the phone. Mr. Quan, not yet. We're going to, we're going to go to, we're going to come back to you and once we get the podium cleaned, but we're going to go to virtual callers until we get the mess cleaned up. So, we're going to go to the phones for a little bit, and we will come back to finish up. We're going to, we're going to clean up that mess, but we're going to go to the phones during the interim. So, we could call, get the virtual callers from the phones. Sorry, Mr. Quan, the person before you is so rude, but that's what happens.
Yeah, well, we'll get to you. So, we're going to the telephones per the president's order. So, if we could take the first caller, and we'll try to clean that up while we're taking the deal on the phone.
Okay, public comment. Emila Padilla, I would never disrespect your father. When I speak about your father being a gardener like I was a hard worker, it's just to remind you who you're supposed to represent. Don't follow Monica Rodriguez and represent her interests. Represent the people that you come from. That's all I'm asking. There will never be disrespect from me to your family, ever. So, that's on public comment, just to make it clear. Don't ever think I'm attacking your dad or anything else for being a hard worker. I have a big pleasure to know that he's my kind of person. Just remember who you represent, the people, not the people that can't get on those light rails and go to work. That's why I'm against the light rail system, because that light rail will kill Pacoima and Arlita that you and Monica Rodriguez represent. Please think about the people you represent, not the item you think, and don't tell the people. Let them eat cake.
Thank you, we'll move to the next speaker.
The double-dipping on LAPD, they only need to be off for 30 days to come back, double-dip, and get twice their salary for 11 days of service. LADWP, you have to be off 60 days, not work with any company that works with the city.
Have you spoken already?
Nor with the city to come back and double-dip.
Yes, so, everybody thinks you've spoken already. Have you spoken already, Speaker?
Maybe stop shouting out. No one will be shouting out while we're trying to conduct the business of the council.
So...
So, we're pretty sure you've spoken already.
So, when you're paying these people for 11 days of service, where's your budget?
So, I think we can end the call, Mr. President.
All right, that'll close the phones. We're going to take the remaining speakers who are already called for a public comment here in the council chambers. Unfortunately, we won't be able to use the podium. My apologies. So, Mr. Quan, you have the microphone. You'll just need to speak from the side, please.
What about everybody else who hasn't spoken yet?
Mr. Quan, which agenda items would you like to speak to? Because I will manage public comment. Thank you very much. Let us know which agenda items you'd like to speak to, and we'll go to that.
It was just a clarifying question.
No, please speak to the agenda. Which items would you like to speak to?
All items.
Three minutes to speak on the agenda items. Go right ahead.
And general public comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Restart my clock, please.
Yes.
Morning, Fable. It's good to see you, although a little bit rusty. I want to speak on the Walk of Fame item. Mr. Andrew Rudick is giving y'all hell over this thing, and it might seem a little silly, but what's really silly is that y'all don't follow your own laws. So, if anybody really hates Trump and wants to just fund a lawsuit, that's the only way Andrew's going to get any justice and get y'all to follow the law, because that's how this place works. Raise money, bundle money for their elected officials, or sue. Item 49 is on the Sunland Tahunga Neighborhood Council banners. I want to just shout out Smoke and Scan, and again, suggest that you give this money to them instead. Sunland Tahunga has some of the absolutely weirdest and most chaotic politics out there, and I think Smoke and Scan is perfect for them. Item 50 is on North Hills West Neighborhood Council, also on banners. And we got so many cops out there. I just imagine on their days off, they just sit around getting fucked up, watching Smoke and Scan, watching car chases. So, again, a good audience there. Item number 37, this is on the local emergency for housing and homelessness. And it's great to have our chair out here, Council President Paul Krikorian. We went through like two hours of people speaking here, but he wasn't on the floor, but he was on the board. Who was he talking to? What lobbyist, what fundraiser? Can we get the audio fixed, man? I just think it's outrageous that people are facing eviction, massive rent hikes, and the council president, the so-called leader of this bottle, can't be on the floor. We have a local emergency on homelessness and housing, and I find it odd that the ordinance says that you're supposed to have this resolution voted on every 30 days. But at some point last year, you passed a resolution saying you only have to do it, like, what, every 90 days? How do you change a law through a resolution? Maybe you passed an ordinance update since then, but I think that is a bit of a legal vulnerability and kind of weird. I mean, just putting it up for a vote, the only reason not to is so that we don't have a minute to ask about what's going on there, how the money's being spent, so we can ask about why that our city was submitting falsified records in court. Submitting falsified records in court. And you want to talk about a state of emergency on homelessness? Why should we trust anything you're saying about what's going on with Botts? That's happening behind closed doors. In court, y'all were lying. This is an issue that we're never going to make any progress on as long as this is a hopelessly corrupt body. And yesterday indicated that y'all just can't reform yourselves. Y'all can't even get ready for these meetings and read your freaking...
Go ahead to your general public comment now.
On that note, I was very disappointed to see my council member, Councilmember Hernandez, suggesting that we put the city clerk in charge of redistricting applications, somebody who is appointed and responsive to these elected officials. Completely gutted the thing. We had Councilmember Harris Dawson saying that accusations that the Ethics Commission's budget was threatened are rumors. You know that there was a city Ethics Commission staffer that put it in an email in a complaint to their enforcement director? The LA Times saw that email? These are just rumors? Englander, Weezer, Price, all indicted for corruption in the Times since then. Some of them taking cashfuls of bribes. And you want to say that it's unfathomable that this might have happened? This was at the same time that Englander was being investigated by the FBI. You don't think he might be a little sensitive about that? Same time that the LA Times was poking around about Nury and Herb Wesson raising money in downtown L.A. and not reporting that shit.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Candido. And please don't shout into the microphone. We have translators who are wearing earphones, and you're running the risk of physically injuring them. It's really not necessary. Thanks, your time is done. Your time is done. Candido, please. Your time is done.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President.
Your time is done.
Sit down, Rob. Sit down and stop disrupting the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. All items dealing with homelessness, rentals, and public comment, please.
So, I think that's going to be item 37. You have a minute, and then a minute of general. So, please begin.
Thank you, sir. You know, how many times since 1989 that I first came here have I seen this city council fail? Fail the residents of this city? Hillside Villa is one of the biggest examples of that. Here we are, we have people who will become homeless if this council doesn't act properly. Ms. Padilla, Ms. Rodriguez, Mr. De Leon, Ms. Soto, Ms. Hernandez, my hero, if you don't stand with these people today, then what do you stand for? Because you built, you built your politics on them. So, Mr. De Leon, listen, Mr. De Leon, I want to see you stand up for these people. Ms. Hernandez, I know you will, all right? And the two other ladies from the valley, I hope that you will stand for everything you've been told, that you told everybody else that you stood for these people. So, Mr. President, I'm asking you, you only have six more months in this chamber. Do something right and make sure that Hillside Villa is treated with respect, that the residents are treated with dignity, and that the right thing is done for them. If I may go into public comment, Mr. City Attorney.
Okay, yes, please, go to public.
You know, as I'm driving in from the San Fernando Valley and right there in Universal area, all the graffiti is there, all the taggers have hit that. Can you imagine what it's like coming from outside this city to visit? And that's what we have. So, I'm asking the council members from the valley who drive that way to make sure that we remove that graffiti and that we make this place a safer and cleaner place. Ms. Padilla, I have something for you. I've designated you as second chance councilperson, and there's a program called Prisoners to Pups. And what they do is they take these little puppies that are abandoned, etc., they give them to prisoners, and they change lives. And to the man who called in and said that they can't reach you from prison, sir, they can touch you from anywhere they want. So, make sure that you're respectful when you talk about somebody's wife, when you talk about somebody's sister. Make sure, because you can be touched from anywhere. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. What do you want to speak on?
Wait, is my mic on?
Yes.
Okay. Bella, and for a general comment?
Please go ahead.
Okay. We cannot afford any more Band-Aid solutions to the affordable housing crisis. I demand you to be outspoken against the, against, enact policy against the exploitative real estate industry.
Please don't shout into the microphone. It's not necessary and you're going to hurt our translator's ears.
... for people to hoard, to hoard wealth by robbing the average American of affordable housing and rent. Neighborhoods that were once rich with community and culture are now turned into a generic and inauthentic artificial culture industry where LA culture is now $25 smoothies. Young people cannot think of marriage or children. Our society is on a one-way track to disaster. Choosing not to take drastic measures to protect LA natives will be creating a history for Los Angeles that involves displacement, dehumanization, modern-day colonialism. You will be erasing the magic that Los Angeles was once able to create. Because my generation will not take this abuse, this will be the end. Follow with our change or my generation will vote you out.
Your time has expired. Our final speaker. Final speaker.
Hi. So the speaker who signed up with a dot or no name?
I got no name, my friend. And that's how you do it. You got no name.
So, Speaker, what did you sign up under?
No fucking names.
Which items?
I don't have a name.
Which items?
All items and general public comment.
Okay, you've got three minutes for the items I had out, followed by a minute of general. Please begin.
Let's begin. The goddamn villa apartments. Right now, Unisses, forgive all the back rent. Now, today, don't wait. Kevin's only got a few months left in his one term. Second motion, Kevin. Second motion. Make something good happen with your tragic life. Give these people back their lives. It's redemption. Kern Price, you can vote yes to give and forgive the back rents, to make something good out of your failure. And then we have Imelda. She can vote yes. She never became the cheerleader she wanted for the Rams, but she can vote yes. And this is what we need, right?
So, Mr. Spindler, that was obviously general because it was about Hillside Villa. Would you please move on to the items that are open for public comment?
I'm talking about the villa settlement item. So let's see here. We got a, okay, let's go here. Since you want to do what you want to do, I'll do what I have to do. Number 53, fucking continued fucking consideration, a fucking hearing, fucking protest, fucking appeal, or fucking objection to the fucking Los Angeles fucking Department of Building and Fucking Safety. Fucking compliance with the fucking code violations. Fucking annual inspection costs. $2,370.40 being stolen by Councilmember Marquis Harris Dawson, who left the council chambers while he was signed up illegally. Forgive the lien. Make something good out of your life. Number 54, the fucking continued consideration of another lien. Another lien on a property at 1154 West 67th Street. One of the most expensive areas to live in, next to Beverly Hills, right? No, it's a ghetto. So when you live in a ghetto, you have to forgive the lien. You want the guy to stay in the house because if it's vacant, then gang members that know me and over there with Kevin are going to move in and take it over. That's what we do. We, we have gangs that take over houses and everybody knows it. Unisses has known it for years. We take over vacant properties and we charge the gangs and we get a percentage of the protection money, right? Let's find out if the FBI is going to investigate that under LSA. That's right. So 54, let's forgive the lien as well. And all this other shit, we will now go to general.
No, you already had generals, Mr. Spindler. You started with your general. It was all Hillside Villa. It was. Actually, you can have a minute on the items because you started with a minute of general.
So let's do it. Free Stacy Segarra-Bolinger, the political presenter...
Yeah, that's not on the item.
... who wants the rents to be forgiven.
Mr. Spindler, let's stick with the items if we're going to get the minute.
We want votes. We need 10 votes to forgive their liens. Forgive their wince. We only need 10.
So, so, Mr. Spindler...
Come on, Buckethead. Come on, Buckethead, help us out. I see 10 votes. And I know the guy standing up right there loves you.
You're taking more general, so I'm afraid you've run out of time, Mr. Spindler.
He wants you to have free rent for this one time.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Spindler. Your time is done. Your time is done. Stop shouting out in the audience or you'll be removed immediately. Okay, the woman who's yelling is in violation of Rule 12. Spindler, take a walk, have a nice day. Mr. McCosker, I'd like to recognize Mr. McCosker for a moment. Mr. McCosker.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I realize that our public comment portion has concluded. I just wanted to acknowledge that I have a number of CD-15 residents who are here today who signed up to speak on item number 37. I appreciate them very, very much and I'm sure we all appreciate all of our constituents who showed up to speak on the item. I want to thank you for coming. I apologize that the time has been taken, but we see you and we appreciate you. Thank you.
And thank you very much for saying so. And to all those who would like to have spoken, obviously, we've taken well over an hour and a half of comment. And so I apologize that we couldn't get to everybody, but we appreciate your coming down and participating in this meeting. So thank you very much. Okay. That's the, that's the end of public comment. There won't be any more disruption of the meeting. There won't be anything that disrupts the work of this council. That's it. Public comment is now closed on all agenda items and general public comment is closed. So with that, we're going to go to Madam Clerk. We can now take up items 1, 37 through 38, and 40 through 52.
Yes, Mr. President.
Those items are now before us. Do any members wish to be heard?
No more.
Okay, would the people there please stop shouting?
Okay, I'm sorry, but the meeting is being disrupted by a handful of people who are shouting despite multiple warnings. Sergeants, every one of them is ordered removed pursuant to Rule 12. So please note, everyone who's shouting now, they are ordered removed. All right. Again, members, I apologize for that disruption, but items 1, 37 through 38, and 40 through 42, I'm sorry, 40 through 52 are now before us. I see no members being heard. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
All right, that'll take us to item number 19.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I'd like to speak about item 33 on today's agenda and the covenant extension for Hillside Villa that is before us today. In 2019, the 30-year Affordable Housing Covenant at Hillside Villa expired and soon after tenants received rent increases of up to 300%. As you have heard from the tenants themselves throughout this process, this building is occupied primarily by low-income families, including many on fixed incomes, and there was no way for them to keep up with these new rent increases. What is before us today is an agreement that I believe meets our collective goals of both preserving affordable housing in Los Angeles and protecting vulnerable tenants from falling into the eviction to homelessness pipeline. During Wednesday's Housing and Homelessness Committee, I shared that after successful discussions between myself and the owner of this building, he agreed to amend the initial terms of this extension to include a six-month interest-free extension for rent debt repayment. That change is reflected in the report from the Housing and Homelessness Committee and I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Ramon, for her leadership at the committee meeting and on tenant rights issues across the city. Throughout this process, my goal has always been to ensure that the tenants at Hillside Villa remain housed and I believe this agreement is critical to achieving that goal. And I have shared my concern that Hillside Villa is far from an isolated incident, it is a canary in the coal mine. Across our districts, we have thousands of units with affordability covenants that will expire in the coming years. This is a looming cliff that will only worsen our current housing affordability crisis. Today, I'm also introducing a motion to create an emergency rental assistance program for tenants who accrued more than six months of rent debt as a result of increases in rent they face because of expiring affordable housing covenants. I believe that this is crucial and critical to ensuring the spirit and intent of this agreement is met and that we keep the tenants of Hillside Villa housed. I appreciate the support of my colleagues in the Housing Department as we try to come up with solutions to this and I ask for your a vote today. Thank you.
Thank you. Please stop, please stop disrupting the meeting, Mr. Soto Martinez. You're on the, you're on the cue to speak? You're on the cue to speak?
Yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Council President. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilmember Hernandez and her team for their diligent work to get what I believe is the strongest possible agreement possible here. But most importantly, I'd like to thank the tenants of the Hillside Villa. These tenants have been organizing together for the last five years to preserve desperately needed affordable housing in their community because they saw a livelihood in threat that was knocking at their, literally knocking at their doorstep. And that organizing is especially powerful because Hillside Villa is not an isolated incident. As a city, we have thousands of units with affordable covenants that are set to expire in the near future. So I hope that the council can take lessons from this issue and continue our work to ensure that we don't lose thousands of units of affordable housing over the coming years. I want to applaud Councilmember Hernandez for her work on creating an emergency rental assistance program, which I will be very happy to support and try to find the funding for the, for the tenants. And so what we have here in front of us is a deal that keeps the tenants housed for at least the next 10 years. We have rental assistance that we're going to be able to find for those folks so they can pay their, pay their back rent. And I know the fight doesn't stop there. This is highlighted a much larger issue in the city, but I do want to thank everyone that was in this. And in conclusion, I think the heart of this deal is in keeping tenants in their home and I think that's going to be fully realized. And again, thank you so much, Councilmember Hernandez, for your work on this.
Please stop disrupting the meeting. Folks have been warned. All right, that clears the queue for speakers. What's next? All right, so this item is before us. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right. What's next?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted and they are referred.
That clears the desk, sir.
All right. Announcements, members. Announcements, members of the council.
Please be quiet. We have a meeting to continue.
Sergeants, please escort the folks who are disrupting the meeting out of the chambers. You all are, everyone engaging in the protest is ejected from this meeting pursuant to Rule 7.
Okay, so everybody who's shouting has been ordered removed from the meeting. So for everybody who's listening at home, my apologies. There's a ton of noise. We can't possibly continue our business as well as this is going on. Because we have about 20 people who are shouting as they slowly leave the meeting. Okay. Sorry, we're still delayed as they shout as they leave. And it's continuing. And they're still shouting as they leave. We're almost there, though. Okay, Mr. President, I think the shouters are out of the chamber.
Play a critical role as frontline responders during crises. And regularly, they are the first first responders in their role in public safety. So beyond supporting and advocating telecommunications personnel through policy and budget resources, this is also a time for us to promote the mental health...
Hold on, Mr. McCosker. Someone else needs to be escorted out the meeting. She's been disrupting the meeting at least a half dozen times since we've been here pursuant to Rule 7. Please see your way out quietly. All right, Mr. McCosker, our apologies.
Thank you so much. So during this National Public Safety Telecommunications Week...
And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.